This is regular meeting of the Navas County Council's Call and Order on 23rd January in Montezlán, Colorado. Let the record show all members of the county president. Welcome and thank you for being here this evening. If you have yourself on your side of the boat. And visitors, if you would please sign in. To speak up for Mr. Mark, please tell our former founding back and state your name and address at the podium as we will start in all meeting business. And remarks leave in three minutes. Tonight's indication will be led by Pastor Matt Bone, then followed by the pledges.
May I say, a gracious God, we gather once again. We assemble as citizens and leaders of our city, God, that you've blessed us with. God, we just want to take a moment to thank you for all of the many blessings that we have as a city and as citizens of the county and city. We thank you for the leadership. We thank you for the law enforcement and the first responders, God. We're really blessed in that area. God be with us now. Let us have encouraging words this evening that we might lift our spirits and our hearts and really embrace the blessings that you've given us in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On honor to Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and individual.
You got number four, start from four.
Mayor, I'm going to have Susan give you an update on the election of 2023. How'd they?
Mayor and City Council, just like to let you know that signups have began. They started in January the 18th, and they will go through February the 17th. The positions are four and five, and so far we've had Bert to sign up in his current position, and James Harris has signed up in the current position at Grant Hills.
Any update from council members on the boards or committees?
I didn't tell me that last Thursday, they had a request from Cross Trails Development to put in a new subdivision out off of kind of in front of, you might say, the Con Lakes. It's going to be item five and six on the agenda. TMZ passed it again on the slate, and it comes to us now.
All right. Just wanted to write down and put on the calendar here, this Friday evening, Go Texas sponsored dinner and raffles at six in Fairground. And it's Go Texas Weekend, and so Stacy asked me to proclaim good weather. We'll try to do that, except they're out of the city limits, so I'll do our best. It's usually a muddy affair, but this year maybe won't be. But they have a record eighty-four teams this year. They've never had more than seventy-two, I believe, so it's going to be quite a party going on out in the highlands there. So definitely get out there and eat.
Eat some breakfast.
Yeah, there's going to be plenty of it, so go out there and enjoy it. Lots of entertainment and lots of things for the kids, a lot of stuff going on, so make sure you go out and check it out. Some of you are probably already on the cook table, so. February, excuse me, Saturday, Saturday night at 5:30, starting at 5:30, the Brown County Crime Stoppers banquet will be held in Anderson K.C. Hall, will be recognizing outstanding law enforcement in the county, and also giving a dinner to all of our county law enforcement, and some special gifts to those who serve us. And so it is open to the public. Representative Kyle Fessell will be speaking, and just your donation at the door will pay for your dinner. And Connie will tell you if I missed anything. Tuesday, the 7th of February is a planning Red Cross Blood Drive, 11:30 to 5:30, First United Methodist Church. And you can sign up online, just go to the redcrossblood.org and find the Navasota Blood Drive, and you can go ahead and reserve a spot. February the 8th, Coffee with Chamber at Classic Rock Coffee at 9:00 a.m., until the 8th, that's a Wednesday. And Saturday, the 11th of February, is the Galentine's Sipping Shop, and that's from noon to 5:00 downtown. Like the retailer group downtown for organizing and putting that together, so we'll sip local and shop local.
Mayor, a couple of things. So tomorrow, we've got several of us, along with, I think Mayor's going to be going, to HGAC's Bring Back Main Street event that's at Lake Jackson. Kind of puts us in the forefront if we talk about adding a new Main Street manager and bringing back the Main Street designation for the city of Navasota, so that's going to be in the morning, and will return sometime after noon. On Thursday at 12:15, we got an EDC meeting, I think one or two items on the agenda for that. And then that evening, on Thursday evening, we got TMZ. And then next Wednesday, February 1st, it's Grimes County Days at State Capitol, so City County and School District will be represented, will be led by the Chamber, so the Chamber's going to be hosting that, and then actually it's sponsored by Entergy, so Entergy's going to be helping provide any of the expenses related to that evening. A couple of other things I want to let you know about. Staff's got a meeting set with representatives from the Mudcats, it's that time of year. Make sure the pool's up and going, and Jose has guaranteed that the pool's working today. So it is running, the pumps are going. We've got some more, we're going to do some cleaning, put some chemicals out there, but we're going to meet with them and let them know that it's well on its way. Hopefully by the time they start up, we'll actually have our parks and rec manager in town here and working, and so that's some good news. We also, many of you probably remember Rita Bullen, used to work as a utility billing manager. She was in town and has a lot of knowledge related to utility billing, and so we entered into a small contract with her for a couple of days to provide Maribel and UV staff some training, since she remembers the system very well, knows it really well, and most of our people there are all new, and so that's going to be some valuable training this week. Also, want to make sure that you're aware that the library will be closed during lunch hour from 12 to 1:00 p.m. tomorrow and Friday. So we'll be short-staffed on those days, so we're just one employee working, so the library will be closed from 12 to 1:00 to allow the employee to have lunch, and that again, that's only on Tuesday and Friday this week. Sent out an email, we're in that process of planning for our strategic plan, so we've narrowed down the dates, so we're going to start that process on April 4th, which is a Tuesday, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. We'll have a town hall public comment section, so the consultant will come in, we'll be sure to put something out to the public to invite them to come in, and the consultant will be engaging the attendees of that event to try to see what their vision is for the city. The following day, the consultant will be here all day. We will be identifying seven stakeholder groups, such as, you know, somebody from education, developers, downtown businesses, civic and nonprofits, and she will be meeting with them in forty-five minute sections all throughout the day, again, getting some feedback from them relating to their organizations. She'll gather all that information, we'll do some homework for staff and for council in between that period on trying to identify, do a SWOT analysis that we'll do remotely prior to us meeting. On April 18th, which is also a Tuesday, she will return and meet with executive staff, talk about core values, talk about projects that we have up and coming, things that we think is vital for the city over the next two to three years. Then she will come back the next day on April 19th, that morning, Wednesday morning, and council and either or of that executive staff will be available to come in and meet with the consultant and kind of iron out what your vision is for that, and then she'll go back and put a report together and build to actually have a plan put together in time for us to start working on our budget process. So that again is our strategic plan, and we're looking forward to that. At this time, Mayor, don't have any other announcements.
I don't know if you mentioned, we have, there's a Keeping Up So Beautiful meeting this week.
Oh, sorry.
It's Wednesday night, I was late, right? The 25th, and that's at 6:00. Do you have a seat? So I wanted to invite you to attend that. Item five is to conduct a public hearing for the purpose of receiving public comment testimony in part of zoning change applications submitted by Cross Trails Development LLC for property located in the A0055-0D Tyler Abstract Adjacent to Pecan Lakes Estates Phase Two. Zoning application requests to change the zoning from Ag Open to Pecan Grove Estates PUD. A planned unit development for the development of a 35.13 acre single dwelling unit subdivision. Property effect is legally described as A0055-0D Tyler Track Four, 35.13 acres located in Navasota, Grimes County, Texas.
End of the time, Mayor.
End of time is 6:12.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, good evening. As Councilman Holt already mentioned earlier in the staff report, on January 12th, planning and zoning, held a public hearing. We had quite a few residents come out from Pecan Lakes Estates, that's the subdivision south of this project. There are many concerns and questions are just about, is this going to be single family? Is it going to be multifamily? And once it was communicated that it is a single-family project, there wasn't really any opposition. There were some questions about proposed price point and access, but aside from that, as Councilman Holt said, they voted unanimously to approve the HUD. So this project is 35 acres, it'll be approximately 130 plus slots, once they account for parkland and roadways and everything else. Single-family subdivision, and Brandon Goodike with Cross Trails Development is here, he's in the audience, if y'all have any questions specifically about the HUD or anything else.
Yeah, I'd like to see if he could come on and just kind of give us just an overview of what his vision is with this development in Navasota.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and all council members. My name is Brandon Goodike of Cross Trails Development. My partner Chad Murphy, apologies for not being able to make it tonight, I represent well. Basically, what we're looking at on the front there of Pecan Lakes is just basically extending the same subdivision standards. We're going to speak with the HOA as well about joining into that HOA on our front portion as well. We are currently partnering with two builders, StyleCraft, which has already been building and approved within Pecan Lakes and the Ranger Homes. And so, you know, we're looking right now to do three different phases. The first initial phase is about forty of lots of initial lease, just to kind of see how the market bears, and then we'll continue building from there.
Can you give us, just to give an idea of where this spot is located?
Yes, sir. So if you are going into Pecan Lakes off, I think it's Fairway Drive?
Fairway Drive.
Fairway Drive. It'll be on the right-hand side, so you may see, we recently knocked down, there's a red old home that was on there, we've just recently knocked that down, and we have a pile of rest that we need to remove, but it'll be on the north side of Pecan Lakes between Highway 105 and Pecan Lakes subdivision. So we do a few roads that join into Pecan Lakes as well. There is a commercial frontage portion that we do not own at this point. The PD is under, we bought the 35 acres, Ron has retained that, and we don't know what his plans are at this point, but we're sitting just behind the commercial and just north of Pecan Lakes itself.
It'd be behind the new storage.
No, it's just west of that. And then just, I guess, east of the new road that Mr. Hassle has. I've got two, correct me if I'm wrong, there's going to be two new entrances. There are on the east, one on the west, into the subdivision. There'll be, there'll be one off, there's actually, there's two of them approved, that test out entrances through the commercial off 105, and then we have the new drive that Mr. Hassle is putting in, and we have two entrances off of that drive as well.
I have a question about the PD and the parking. Would it be normal to have two onsite parking spaces per single dwelling unit?
Yes, yes, sir. So that actually aligns with our current zoning ordinance. Anytime you have a new home, you're required by code of two minimum. Now, of course, most driveways are fairly deep, so you can fit four cars in a house plus two in a garage, but that's the standard language that's found in our ordinance, so this HUD is really based off the R1A.
Okay. And the exterior lighting, I think that really pertains to the home, but we had talked about street lights and the distance between street lights. Have we addressed that as far as the distance? Because we, I think we had talked that the distance right now currently is too far apart. So does this reflect the current standard, which potentially is too far apart?
Yes, so we did address that a number of, I think it's probably, I can't remember exactly when, but the new standard is every 300 feet, and that's actually found in the subdivision ordinance, so this is just laying out how the land is going to be used.
It gets to use the 300, which may or may not be too far apart.
Correct, yeah, 300 is the current standard, yes, sir.
I'm happy to say that we're paying some attention to the use of water and irrigation systems and retention. Capture bring water for irrigation standards on that. I think that was passed due. I guess the only other question I have is what, I don't understand this. So it says street cross-sections 2.52% instead of the standard 3%.
Yes, so if you, if you were to cut a roadway, kind of like you cut a pie, your crown of your road is, if it's really, really steep, you can walk in the center line of the road and you'll kind of be, you know, leaned over to one side, so that two and a half is just a little flatter than the standard three that the city requires. So three is actually not that common, what we ask for. Typically, most cities even have a two minimum. Once you get really high, then you're, you know, you're going to have to anchor yourself. So two and a half, we ran it past our engineers, I don't have any issues, talked to Jose and Public Works, and they're, that's a pretty common standard across the board, so.
So that's when you see water runoff and water is rejected?
Yeah, so what it does is it just, like, in a rain event, you have a little bit more water in the street, because you don't have that peak in the middle, but it's fairly standard, so there shouldn't be any issues.
Have you had any discussions, I'm sorry, any discussions with the owner of the frontage?
Yeah, yeah, actually, Paul and I have spoke sometimes, we probably speak once a month. He's engaged with us and asked us to buy the commercial front, we're just not ready to do that right now. We're on good terms with him, and we have got access approval through the commercial from him, yes.
They have indicated any immediate plans?
No, he's engaged, he can look into us to kind of guide him on that a little bit, maybe provide some direction, and maybe even manage that for him at some point in time, but just not ready at this point to present anything. Nothing has been really determined.
More than likely with that back part, or what, actually, the front part of the line, would that be completely empty?
Are you concerned on the furthest north portion?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Is Mr. Hassle happy?
He's saying, "Mr. Hassle."
Are you happy?
Oh, I didn't hear you, sorry.
You good?
Are you happy?
All right.
Am I happy?
Yes, sir.
I'm always happy.
Fair enough. Well, right now.
We're going to hope that you're happy.
And you said start from the first phase with like forty?
Yeah, forty, forty dollars, correct. I think the next two phases will probably be around the same, forty-five to fifty, until we can kind of, I think right now we're looking at about 142 to 43, and that is what we're looking at, once we get final plan approval.
And you're looking to get started soon?
Yeah, we're about ready to release bid docs, and so as soon as we select a contractor, we'll probably begin construction.
All right, we're going to close the hearing at 6:21. Item six is consideration possible action on the first reading of ordinance 1014-23, approved for zoning change applications submitted by Cross Trails Development LLC for the property located in the A0055-0D Tyler Abstract Adjacent to Pecan Lakes Estates Phase Two. Zoning change application requests to change the zoning from Ag Open. Space District to Pecan Grove Estates PUD, a planned unit development for the development of a 35.13 acre single dwelling unit subdivision. The property effect is legally described as A0055-0D Tyler Track Four, 35.13 acres, Navasota, Grimes County, Texas. First reading. Mr. Mayor, I am glad that we passed first reading of ordinance number 1014-23, a second to zoning change for Cross Trails Development LLC. Thank you. Motion by Mr. Holt, second by Mr. Gester to approve on first reading ordinance 1014-23. Any further discussion? On the papers, say aye. And the opposed? Say no, aye, here. Item seven, consideration possible action on the first reading of ordinance 1015-23, amended check three building regulations, art 3206, signs related to freeway and freestanding signs.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, so just to briefly summarize, there's two amendments being proposed in this ordinance. One is to amend the freeway sign regulations, and the other is freestanding signs, and I'll first touch a bit on the freeway signs. So our current sign ordinance was adopted and passed in 2017. That's where we enumerated different types of signs, freeway signs, monument signs, and everything in the middle. As the last slide shows, our residential rooftops continue to come in, which is leading to a lot of interest on the commercial side, and of course, that means national retailers are coming into the city and building. So recently, we have Chicken Express that built along 105. Jack in the Box is about done, and then there's another future retailer in the middle that's looking at a pad site, and of course, we've heard the other, other big names that are buying land, and so both, both of those, both the Jack in the Box store and the pad site in between Jack in the Box and Chicken Express, they are both, they're both wanting the freeway sign, similar to Chicken Express's 42 and a half foot sign. However, our current rules state that you can only have freeway signs along the Highway Six corridor and within 400 feet. So if you think about right where the edge of Highway Six ends and Highway begins, that's your starting point, so 400 feet is the buffer that allows those type of signs.
That's what allowed Chicken Express?
That's what allowed Chicken Express, they just made the cut, I think they were like at 380 before they wanted to put their sign, so they got it. And so Jack in the Box is wanting to do a similar, a similar sign, and so is the other user in the middle. And, you know, as our city grows, I think when this ordinance was adopted, it was accurate for the time, Highway Six was the primary corridor, but with 249 opening, I think that's going to be the next main arterial through our town, and so the proposed amendment would just add that stretch of 105 east and slash 249 to that rule to allow for freeway signs. I know this morning, myself and city manager were discussing the ordinance, too, and, you know, at some point, we probably want to look at Highway 92, with other projects coming in, it's just going to be more common, so that may be something to consider as well. So that's on the freeway signs, it's just basically adding 105.
What's the height of the Chicken Express sign? Forty-two?
Forty-two and a half. Do y'all have, I mean, we can, I guess I can go ahead and touch on the freestanding signs. So freestanding signs are, they're not, they're not monument signs, right? Those are close to the ground, and they're not freeway signs, the 42 and a half that you can see from the highway. Freestanding signs are meant to be that middle, that middle ground. Our current ordinance, I mean, I think it's, I think it was just, it was just overlooked, looking at what's on the ground now, so in the staff report, I provided a few examples of some freestanding signs that are there today, that they couldn't be rebuilt tomorrow if, if for whatever reason they, I don't know, they were hit, or they decided to redesign them with a similar height. Those kind of signs and that kind of height would not be permitted based on the current language, because our current language, the maximum height is 10 feet for freestanding signs, and that's only along the Highway Six corridor. So the proposed amendments would allow for up to 25 feet throughout the city for freestanding signs, with the exception of Central Business District, which is downtown, and the overlay district. You know, those are two areas that I think originally the intent was to make sure those areas are protected and you don't have really big tall signs, but as far as LaSalle, West Washington, SPUR, all those other areas, you're going to need a little bit taller than six foot, because if you're not along the Highway Six corridor, the highest you can go is six foot. So these would just give you a little bit buffer. And these were both, I guess this amendment was triggered from Jill's Italian Restaurant, I'm sure many of you have ate there already. Their current signs that they have in place now, they kind of jumped the gun a bit, we're working with them, they weren't going to make any decision on the sign until they got a master tonight, but that sign there is 10 feet tall, and so that's not allowed based on the current regulations, it would have to be six. And then the new welding supply store on SPUR 515, they want a similar sign, kind of like the, probably like the Dollar Tree sign, a similar type sign, again, wouldn't be allowed based on current regulations, so this is just, I think it was just, it was just overlooked this kind of category with this kind of height. It's important to still protect downtown, still keep the overlay district with a certain height limit, but I think the rest of the town, these are just a few examples, I actually have probably fifteen or twenty more photos on my phone that drove around and took a bunch of photos, so. Yeah, it's just, so both of those amendments would prevent a lot more variance requests in the future. I mean, just these two amendments here would prevent probably four requests within the next month or so, so it just, it just kind of gets a little bit more streamlined and trying to make some changes to be in line with what's on the ground and what we want.
It's probably a little less harmonious for business owners when you're trying to get their, their business up and down, I'm sure.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, I think we certainly want to be business friendly, which is what we talk about, but we also want to maintain the integrity or improve the integrity of what the city looks like, and I think that these examples that you provided in our packet, I wouldn't be okay, I would be okay if they weren't allowed. And I think, I think probably we did talk about, when we did the sign ordinance, talk about what these look like, and probably didn't include them because we didn't want them, is what I feel like, but I could be wrong. But I had a question about, so let's say that O'Reilly closes their doors, and that sign goes away, the actual sign, not the pole. Can that sign be replaced without, the image within the metal piece, can that be replaced without coming to? Can that be replaced without coming to, um, anybody for approval?
Uh, I think if it's, uh, if it's like a swap, right, let's say O'Reilly closed and, and another, another X retailer comes in, uh, they could probably apply for a replacement of that sign, uh, fascia, uh, but if that sign remains empty for an extended amount of time, uh, probably, I mean, based on other language and the ordinance, maybe, maybe six months, we would consider that it to be abandoned. Uh, then it wouldn't, then you wouldn't have to, you would, you couldn't fill something back in, you'd have to build new, and which means they'd have to tear it down and build something shorter.
So, thinking about, uh, business on South LaSalle right now that currently has, um, a, a big open spot, and you've also got, I think churches is, you know, has the framing. Who, who would go in and say, this is, if you've abandoned this sign, you've got to tear it down, I mean, who does that?
Yeah, I mean, that would be our staff, so we would, we would send a letter, send an email. I know, like, the church example, that's a good example, so they're, um, they're definite, it's definitely abandoned. Uh, we're trying to work with them, hopefully trying to get that place reoccupied, uh, but that sign meets the requirement, just because the fact that it's empty, yeah.
I don't know, I, I think the more signs that you have that are like this, the worse off they look. Just personally. I'm sure they're easy to install and people can see it, but, but these were built probably when the Highway six was the, was, when Business six was more of a highway than it is the business. Because thirty miles per hour, I don't think you'd assign quite that large. Almost all probably didn't have to, uh, right. I think the subway was actually, it's not its grandfather, but it's, it's in the, over, in the...
Uh, I think the, no, the, the overlay starts right after Burger King, so this is in the V, that's in V one, yeah, V one area. And I, and I don't think it quite makes the cut of four hundred feet from Highway six either. Uh, or am I, I mean, it's pretty, it's pretty close.
Well, I, I don't, I mean, I can see where you're, where, um, Josh is coming from, but I would also hate for, um, the people that are improving the town by adding their businesses down LaSalle, and I'm not talking about the Central Business District or, or downtown, whoever's trying to maintain that aesthetic. And even in the early leadership, I understand maintaining some sort of aesthetic, but, um, a lot of these people are just people that just want to do something good in the community and open up a business, and there's a sign there, and they would like to use the sign and change out the information, and it's there. I mean, you're looking at, you know, twenty thousand dollars to have to tear it down and put a new one in because it's... I, I just don't, I think that it's onerous for someone that is trying to open a business.
Yeah, but the Dollar General doesn't need a big sign that says, "We're the Dollar General."
I think more along, we've got several small towns like the, the Joes, they want to use the sign that's already there, and it doesn't fall for them.
No, it's not already, it wasn't.
Well, a good example of that was when, put it in.
Best western change, yeah. Out on there, and we had to approve it because they were changing the sign, and it didn't meet the current, and we did approve it for them, but...
You know the height of the McDonald's?
About forty-two, forty-two feet. Yeah, they're all...
It's okay, so none of them are any taller than that.
You know, the, the, I think the Annie one might be a little bit taller, uh, and that one was there a, a while.
Because I know the Stripes, they didn't choose, I don't think they went that high when they first went in.
Maybe not initially, but I think now they've got a pretty tall sign out there. Yeah, that's probably around thirty-five.
The Chicken Express did not ask for any more, I think they just went with the old.
Yeah, they went with the freeway sign because they, they qualified for it. They were within four hundred feet.
The Jack in the Box one did.
No, Jack in the Box or the other pad site.
I swear I've done it. Well, originally, that's what we had to do for Napa, being too tall.
Therefore, if they would have done it, it would have been right on the very corner, and we approved it so they could put it out just a little bit more.
A little, a little central.
Probably, yeah.
That is, uh, on Spur five.
Is there any way to break this ordinance into two separate? Because, I mean, what you're asking for is a motion to approve both of these changes. Is there a way to approve one and, and not the other?
Councilmember Holt, um, you could, if you're inclined to do so, you could make the motion, but, uh, excluding or, you know, when you make the motion saying, "I move to approve the ordinance with subsection A but not subsection B," however you want to split it up. So you could do that in the verbal motion that you make, um, and then if that is approved by council, then on second reading, we would bring it back as revised. So, I don't know if it's necessary to split it up, if I'm understanding your question correctly.
I think you can.
Yeah, yeah, so you, you can make the motion to approve the ordinance with revisions.
What is, what is the practical limit now for, say, something on LaSalle, that sign itself? Is it six, sixteen or ten, you said something about ten feet?
It's, it's six foot essentially. Now, they, there is a, there is one that gives a little bit higher, uh, but that's primarily for what we call pylon signs, which is, uh, the signs that have a lot of tenants, so like the strip center that has a, a bunch, uh, those, those usually go a little higher. Yeah, so those go to eight feet. So you have eight feet, you have six feet, um, or the monument, which is four, or the, you know, the forty-two and a half on the freeway. Uh, and so I guess the idea was, is that it almost seemed like we, uh, we're kind of missing the in-between, um, as an option, uh, but...
Missing or purposely didn't put in there?
Yeah, I mean, I guess that's the, that's the, that's the question.
I think when we did that, it's hard to envision what ten feet looks like, six feet looks like, some of this. We can identify it in here and say, you know, forty feet or fifty feet. But what it's going to look like out on the road is, is something different. We were concerned about it, but the concern, and, and we went to a big flat that showed the, the movie that showed the, the place as a horrible example of all the quiet signs hanging out on the, uh, used car stripped down through a urban center. I, I think if, if the ordinance keeps the thing from hanging out over the road, then it's not quite so distasteful. Then if, if they're back off to, off of the road, it, uh, if they don't show up so bad, you know, they're fifteen feet. I would hope that, that in some cases we can get enough of a density that to put all the signs out would be a, would be a, a problem, but I don't know with our, our spaces in town or laid out in a rural setting type thing. And, uh, I don't foresee us getting into a situation where the businesses are stacked up one on the other as, as they are in some of the larger cities.
How many do we have right now down in LaSalle that are originally there, that have been there, that have seen this, that, that may or may not be turned over to a different business center that then would be required to tear down a perfectly good place to put a sign and pay for another one?
Uh, so probably...
And what is the feasibility of having those signs grandfathered so that if someone does purchase them, they don't have to pay fifty thousand dollars for another sign to be installed while that needs to run down?
And so there's approximately seventeen?
Seventeen.
Plus or minus?
That could be grandfathered.
Well, I, I don't think we've required anything to be torn down at this point, I mean, you've got...
I'm just saying, if we do this in the future, it will be a requirement.
Well, I don't, it, it is done now, now it's done, and this is the way that it is, we don't have this option. But people are still using the same signs, even though the ordinance says you can't do it because people are just swapping out the interfacing. Uh, you have a, a smoke shop that just came in that, I don't know if they got approval for their sign, but it's slapped up on top of the area, it's a re-chiropractor from, you know, thirty years ago. That's my concern today. But we are, we are not other cities, we are Navasota, we're trying to protect ourselves, being clean and dressed up a little bit, and so I'm just, I, I don't know that these signs are necessary, um, when the speed limit's thirty miles per hour as you drive past the business. I, I kind of understand the freeway, I can get that, but...
Well, if it's six foot and you've got traffic going both ways, you can't see the sign on the other side of the street.
I, I don't know, I drive down the street every day, and I know all the businesses just because I see them, but not because of...
You have to drive through them, they, they're trying to capture people, and that's the, the biggest deal.
Well, O'Reilly's sign certainly captures people, and the Dollar General, because you can't see the sign on their building that says, "Dollar General."
Um, commercial taxes go a long way.
Any idea of how many new businesses are looking for signage on LaSalle? Uh, other than the, the one, uh, over the last, how many months, let's say, six months?
Uh, over the last six months, you had, um, I mean, I guess physical signs where they're going to install, I mean, we have the Joes, right? And, uh, and I think depending on the action tonight, either they're going to, one, move forward with their variance application that has come before the council and try to get approval for the, I think there's a ten foot stall. Um, but aside from that, then I know Navasota Welding Supply recently also applied for a sign permit, uh, but on LaSalle, probably, I mean, that's the only one that I can think of in the last six, six months. I mean, as you said, there have been others that have replaced their sign inserts.
Yeah.
Um, have they, uh, I, I can't think offhand if they've actually applied for the permits to replace the inserts or not. Um, of course, there, those are a little bit harder to spot whenever they're already there. Um, but it, but it's not, it's not a ton, I mean, obviously, there's not, there's not a lot of new, uh, new business in building along LaSalle coming in. Um, but, um, but when they do apply, I mean, that, you know, that it's, it's a variance process, and so uh, we can continue to bring those, those, you know, individual variances, uh, to the, to the council per, per, you know, as needed when they come in. Um, you know, that was just, this was just a, a way to kind of streamline that process a bit.
Sure, but if we have one in six months and we go and change it versus where we've been, uh, then we leave ourselves open to more folks saying, "Okay, well, I'm going to put up a sign if I can do this kind," versus doing them one at a time. But I guess if there's a huge demand and you've got twenty a day, then maybe we should probably look at it, but if it's only one, why change it? And just let them come and request a variance for that?
Yeah, and so, yeah, and so, I mean, the idea was two-fold, it was one, to accommodate the one new that wants to build new, and then two, uh, what are we going to do about all these other signs that are already there? Are they, are they, are they meant to go away, and if so, I mean, we, we have to know that, you know, a hundred percent. So if they do apply for something else, then they'll have to come for a variance.
I think I would feel more comfortable doing it case by case than just blanketing it across the board for whatever. Because once, once it goes in, they don't come down, uh, the plastic inside of them will, uh, over time, but it... I can't see many street signs along South LaSalle that have been hit by a car and then they had to, you know, replace it, knock on wood, but it just doesn't happen. One thing you said about the variance is create another little stumbling block, and so it doesn't encourage it, yet it doesn't ruin it.
How far does the overlay go on LaSalle?
Uh, the lead to Millers Street, um...
On, 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 south?
Uh, yeah, so no, so the overlay is only along Washington Avenue, that's the only location. So from roughly Miller's Theater all the way to Burger King, that's the, that's considered the overlay district. So that was specifically excluded, um, from along twenty-five foot signs, up to twenty-five foot signs.
So just to go back to the freeway signs, um, the specific ask is, remind me?
To allow, to basically designate one oh five east slash two forty-nine, uh, as also an allowable area for freeway signs that are forty-two and a half feet tall.
To what distance? To city limits again?
Yeah, city limits, well, yeah, city limits and ETJ, so, so we do have sign regulation authority, uh, in our ETJ, so that's one mile out as well.
Isn't, where's that flash and sign at four seventeen inch, four fifteen? It's a Realtor's, I think, right?
Yeah, that's, that, that's beyond a mile.
It's just within that area.
Yeah.
And you're not asking for Highway ninety?
Not right now, not right now.
Well, I would move to approve the first reading of ordinance ten fifteen dash twenty-three freeway signs, excluding the freestanding signs. So, Mr. Holt, second, uh, Mr. Guestner, two, you approve the ordinance ten fifteen dash twenty-three with regard to freeway signs only.
Right. Just, just to clarify, that would be the, um, the first section, portion of section two, which expands the allowable area to set Highway one oh five east and two forty-nine, and but deleting the language following that, correct, in section two?
Okay, thank you, just to clarify.
So we're still going to be on a case by case basis?
Oh, I was just going to make, I was just going to make a point, I'm worried the plane probably will see it. Oh. Part of the reason we have a nice, very high level monument sign was to encourage in case. And then I know we, um, we also addressed the, the church sign over here, correct, that was probably one of mine, I mean? And that, that had to go through the very...
Sure.
I guess so. And it's, and it's a monument sign.
Yeah, it's a monument.
Just a hair, is it?
With, 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 you know, with, you know, with, you know.
And it looks nice.
Okay, uh, further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say no.
Seeing none, I'm happy.
Item number eight, consideration possible action on resolution seven twenty-eight dash point three regarding the requested annexation submitted by Jennifer Hassel for a one-point-three-one-oh acre tract of land in the James Whiteside survey, A sixty-two, Navasota, downtown Texas. Setting a date, time, and place for a public hearing on a proposed annexation of said property by the city of Navasota.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, City Council, lastly, this last, or this resolution, as you mentioned, outlines the date and time of the public hearing as well as establishes the processes and procedures for annexation. Uh, this one-point-three acre tract is a small rectangular piece of property that's actually at the dead end of Putter Place Court in Conlake Phase Three, so right at the end of, of Jason Street. Uh, Mr. Hassel is proposing to add a few more locks at the end of that cul-de-sac to basically extend that first cul-de-sac in Phase Three a little bit deeper in. And so first, the first step of the process is to annex the property and then flat the property and so on and so forth. So this is step one, and Mr. Hassel's here to go ahead and make questions.
Did this go through P and Z?
Not for, so it, it has yet to go through the filing process. So, yeah, so annexation first comes directly to council. Once, once it's annexed, then it will go through P and Z for the filing.
Mr. Mayor, we approve resolution seven twenty-eight dash twenty-three.
Motion by, this fourth second by, this Peterson, we approve resolution seven twenty-eight dash twenty-three.
Further discussion? Or is it for a resolution?
They're about to vote.
Amen.
Recently, I was at a period, I saved out, it was supposed to be a park. I was gonna have a guy want to put a park in there. And then I changed my mind, and I don't think that's appropriate for the neighborhood, so that's why we're having to go to La Salle. Kind of expensive to add six lots in and run the thing out, but that's what we're doing. That's fine, getting it annexed.
What do you think?
All, all good. Aye, you're both. You gotta keep you happy. Letting no door open.
Congratulations, the city manager and the city council, or quote unquote, from all the people that work here, uh, instead of going outside the community and hiring new people. I want to congratulate y'all on doing what you did.
Item nine, consideration possible action of awarding grant administrators for complete application of project implementation of C in Navasota twenty-two-three downtown utilization program grant administered through the Texas Department of Labor.
Mayor, City Council, I want to present to you the Higher Public Management for this grant initiative. We only received one proposal.
And we're using them on some other stuff, so.
Yeah, we're, the, the public management is on several of ours, and they were the only one that submitted it, but we still had to go through, we still have to through the process of scoring it and awarding.
Mayor, Council, I've reviewed the contract. Really, the only change I would recommend is adding a venue provision, requiring venues be in Brown's County if there's any dispute in arising out of the contract, and the same would be true for the next contract as well. So if you're so inclined, if you agree with that, you'll, if you make a motion, if you could include that in your motion, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I move if we approve authorization to hire public management for grant or administrative services for the twenty-two-three downtown utilization program administered through the T E A, adding a venue restriction of Brown's County. Thank you, sir.
Second, motion by Mr. Full, second by Mr. Guest, to approve authorization to hire public management for administrative services in downtown utilization program, which the venues were required for Brown's County.
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Be opposed? Seeing none, I'm happy.
Item ten, consideration possible action of selecting grant administration and planning services for complete application of project implementation of C in Navasota's Resilient Communities Program Grant administered through the G L O.
This is going to be the same one as the last one, if I was public management.
Again, Mayor.
See, that's the same wording.
Yes, sir, that, that would be great.
And it's the only one that submit, they're the only ones that submitted, uh, the programs.
Mr. Mayor, I move if we approve authorization to hire public management for grant administration, planning services for the Resilient Communities Program granted administered through the G L O, adding a venue restriction to Brown's County.
Motion by Mr. Full, second by Mr. Guest, to approve authorization to public management as grant administrator for planning services for the Resilient Communities Program Grant administered through the G L O, adding a venue restriction administered. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, I'm happy.
Thank you.
Item eleven, consideration possible action on Navasota Police Department twenty-two-two racial profiling data report.
Mayor, City Council, my chief police, or you, you got the Navasota Police Department's two thousand and twenty-two annual contact data report for their racial profiling. We do have a policy in place under the Texas Code of Criminal Procedure that we follow, as well as all officers are trained by the T E O for their education on racial profiling. Last year, conducted two thousand two hundred sixty-nine traffic stops and reported zero in class.
And just to point out, there's a block to this report, right? There's a lot of information that goes into it.
Yes. After every stop, they're filling their racial profiling report, which helps us out to get all the data. The only thing on page eleven, the last one, percentages, those are not going to be really correct. That is percentages just for the population of Navasota, but they include all traffic stops for residents and non-residents. So the percentage doesn't really all come back, that's why there's lots of asterisks on the bottom for that.
That's not a real requirement, but.
No, that's just that what it always is, and it's how, that's how they put the data together.
Just give it a day.
They don't pull out non-residents.
That would be profiling.
Mr. Mayor, I move we accept the Navasota Police Department's twenty-two-two racial profiling data report.
Second.
We actually, you asked first. Motion by Mr. Full, second by Mr. Peterson, to approve the racial profiling report in Navasota Police Department twenty-two. Further discussion? Thank you, gentlemen. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Seeing none, I'm happy. Item twelve, consent agenda, which consists of authorizing the city manager to implement agreement with R W Harden and Associates to provide hydrogeology consulting services and perform a groundwater availability study for the city of Navasota in the amount of twenty-two thousand four hundred dollars. Approve resolution seven twenty-six dash twenty-three supporting the city of Navasota public safety office, P S O's grant application for purchase deployed from the Navasota Police Department. Approve resolution seventy-two-seven dash two-three accepting the water, wastewater, natural gas, street, and storm drainage improvements of Phase Four in Conlake State Subway Set Three entrance signage, common areas, and open channel storm drainage improvements, city of Navasota, ground to ground tech. And approve the final project and finance plan for the city of Navasota tax rate increase investment zone one. Approve the contract between the city of Navasota and Xena Corporation in the amount of seventy-three thousand six hundred and two dollars for the purchased materials and associated items related to emergency repairs to the clarifier and other equipment in the city's wastewater treatment plant as offered by section two-five-two point zero two-two, A three, Texas Government Code, as a procurement necessary because of unforeseen damage to public machinery, equipment, or other property caused by December twenty-two winter weather. And finally, approve the contract between the city of Navasota and T E O Services LLC in the amount of forty-seven thousand eight hundred and thirty-two dollars for the purchased materials and associated items related to emergency repairs to the clarifier and other equipment in the city's wastewater treatment plant as offered by section two-five-two point zero two-two, A three, Texas Government, Texas Local Government Code, as a procurement necessary because of unforeseen damage to public machinery, equipment, or other property caused by December twenty-two winter weather. Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the consent agenda. Second. Motion by Mr. Guest, second by Mr. Full, thank you for not reading all of it. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, I'm happy. No further lobbying when we intend to be ordered.